That was wonderful. I want to give you back to you.
What's that?
Come on!
And I went to give my wife a coconut. She's not resigned, so.
Are you serious?
That was so serious.
I can't dig it.
It was surprising. We had a radio show and it was the guy that served us. He said, "Oh, it's toxic toxin." And then, and then I'm like, "Yeah." The news that had been out, that had been going on, that was actually way more. Yeah, I like that. Yeah, I like that. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Okay. The minute councillor Barnes is back, we start. We have all three of you. You're gonna die. Take that ass.
Well, I see how it is.
I did. It's all nervous, because.
All right. Good job. Mr. Barfus, you want to call to order? Thank you. This, uh, three minutes after four. We'd like to thank the media for being here and covering for us on, uh, channel four.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, really.
Thirty-two.
And with having the medias for Templester, Renee Seaborn, and this good boss behind him. And to all of you, thank you so much. I really felt important that we contacted you all for the sake of transparency. It was extremely important to me to see you all back as a follower to our meeting. So, I will explain a little bit more afterwards. We need to start with an opening prayer, and I have the privilege to do so. Dear Father in heaven, we're so grateful to be here today assembled as a group of citizens concerned on the issue on a table, and we are grateful to be able to do so in a country that is free and where we can speak our mind and vote according to our conscience without being pressured. And we're grateful for this opportunity to discuss the matter at hand and to be able to make the right decision. And we say this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. The adoption of the agenda, I need someone to move to adopt the agenda, and as you could see, the agenda only has one item of business. It does not have delegation, and that's the only order of business.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So, maybe I'll give you a little better background why this meeting was called. I received a phone call of a councillor, councillor Barnes, whom you will hear in a little while, who really expressed some serious concern regarding the plebiscite question, especially the question, the fourth question, on alcohol. Because it is such an important question, he asked me, "Can we push the plebiscite further down the line?" And administratively, we could not because of the publication limit we had. We couldn't postpone it to next week because we would not have been within a 15-day limit to have the advance poll been put through. We were short a day. So, the only other solution that a mayor has in those circumstances is to use the MGA and to review the section, which I believe is section 194 if I remember right, under one, who says that you can call a special council meeting. The chief elected official, which is the mayor, may call a special council meeting whenever the official considered it appropriate to do so. The question that was entertained by councillor Barnes was of great importance to him and to us all, and I felt it was important to hear his voice. Then it tells us that the chief elected official calls a special council meeting by giving at least 24 hours notice. I received a phone call at 1:00 in the afternoon, and so 4:00 with 24 hours plus two, plus three hours. And therefore, we are within the limit of the law in doing this. So, furthermore, I really wanted to understand personally what is the legality and the Robert Rules of Order when you have a question that has been defeated but that somebody wants to bring back to the floor? And so, I went to the Roberts Rule, and I have them there, and it says there are two ways to bring a motion back. One way is called renewing a motion. If a motion is defeated, a member can reintroduce it as new business at the next meeting. That is exactly what we're doing today. So, under the rules of, the Roberts Rules of Conduct for a public forum at this one, elected official, we are following the rules. Okay? So, without any further delay, I will ask councillor Barnes to explain his point and his position.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that very much. At the onset, I'd like to dispel a couple of rumors. There have been, I've had phone calls saying that people have coerced me into doing this and calling this meeting. I've had people call me and say that they're, they're concerned that I've been threatened. I want to unequivocally tell you now that I haven't, neither one of them. What I do, I do it my own position. But I'll just explain to that. I want to explain to the council and to members of the gallery why I felt the need to have this special meeting of council called tonight. I want you to know that my feelings about alcohol sales in Carstens have not changed in any way at all. I'm still very much opposed. But my concerns are with the way that I personally voted on not allowing the second question on limiting the alcohol sales in restaurants or, and/or recreational facilities. Yesterday morning, as I was thinking, I had some real serious reflections on the way that I personally have voted and, uh, and what had actually taken place that, that night. I discussed the matter with some of the council and, uh, and the mayor, just so I'd have a sounding board to, to speak to my feelings. And during those conversations, I was informed that, uh, the vote had put the town in a very precarious spot that could cause the opposite effect of what we wanted for our town. So, I'm sure you've all heard of the catch-22. So, that's exactly what we did. We voted ourselves into a catch-22 situation, which I felt was very negative, and it made me very, very concerned. In fact, it could be the cause of the removal of prohibition altogether in Carstens, and it could allow for the opening of alcohol sales on a wide-open basis if a legal challenge to the lack of allowing the second question on the plebiscite took place. This situation would effectively take away our town's ability to have an input to amending or keeping the status quo within the confines of the present prohibition. That thought made me very concerned, and I did not want to be the reason for this situation happening. I realized that I let my personal feelings get in the way of fairness on the second question, and voting against habitating on the plebiscite would allow the first question to pass on the plebiscite without any problem. Disallowing the second question concerning restricted alcohol sale in specific facilities, I felt would be unfair. Those were my feelings, and I did not want to be unfair at all in the situation. I expressed my feelings the other night about reasons why I felt so strongly about alcohol with my own family, and, uh, there was a murder in my family as well, and so I had reasons for being very strongly about it. But nevertheless, I had to step back and be fair and look at the whole situation and see if I was being fair with the way I voted. So, um, I want to reiterate though, before I go any further, that council has not taken a position as a whole on the issues of the plebiscite, but disallowing the second question left the appearance that the council had taken a position, and for this reason, I felt compelled to call this special meeting to do what I could to correct this perception or misperception. So, um, I sought some advice from the town administration and discussed my situation, and I was informed that legal counsel for the town, Reynolds, Mirth, Richards, and Farmer, had indicated that there could be a problem with legal challenge and that the town would likely lose the challenging court. So, with this in mind, I, it made me a better option for council to look at the amendments for limited distribution within the confines of prohibition rather than unlimited distribution without being in the confines of the situation. Okay? It is important to note though, council must look at its options to best participate in the process of maintaining current legislation or facilitating marginal amendments as per the outcome of the plebiscite. Okay? So, therefore, ultimately, seeking such a change as the town desires is a political matter as opposed to a legal one. We always want to maintain the opportunity to have our say in the situation. So, as the lawyer, Mr. Parker, representing the firm suggests, that the process of legal amendment to prohibition is a political one, it may be reasonable that a question on the plebiscite showing support or lack thereof for amendments to prohibition to allow specific license distribution rather than full removal of prohibition may allow for council to work with the province politically to amend or maintain the legislation to accurately reflect the wishes of the community, thus leaving the issue more firmly in the political court in our hands, uh, rather than, of the local council rather than in the, in the courts itself. So, with, um, with those feelings, with this explanation, um, I'd like to, uh, to move to add the following question to the plebiscite.
Is it a motion?
It's a motion. I'd like to make a motion to add the question, "If the province will amend the legislation to allow limited access in our area, are you in favor of restaurants and/or recreational facilities within the town of Carstens selling alcohol?"
Thank you.
Plain and simple.
Questions? We have a motion on the floor. Questions?
Yeah, let me, uh, to, to reflect councillor Barnes's, uh, consideration, explain a little bit about why I voted, why I did, and maybe kind of revisit the issue from the beginning. We have, we had four questions on, on the plebiscite. The original plebiscite asked two questions. "Are you in favor of backyard hens in the town of Carstens?" And "Are you in favor of adding fluoride to the Carstens drinking water?" Two subsequent questions were asked, and the word, the present wording on, uh, the council approved, I'll just read those. These are, uh, we can discuss. "Are you in favor of alcohol sales within the town of Carstens?" And "Are you in favor of allowing sporting events to book town-operated fields and facilities on Sundays?" Now, I would prefer to facilitate, you know, people's requests so that they could have, and I understand the group, you know, what their intent is, and, uh, I would have liked to have voted for their intent, however, um, it would be unfair because we have already asked some other questions, uh, that, you know, that are in, in a certain, in a certain format, which, which are not, you know, uh, perhaps not what the, what the people asking the questions would have intended. For instance, on, on the backyard hens, uh, not, not the way that the, the group proposing that would have liked to ask a question. So, in order to be fair, you know, to one group, we can't show, we can't show, uh, preference to one group without, without accepting what the other groups want as well, and this is why I voted.
Councillor, can I help you here a little bit?
How I did.
Okay. Thank you. Can I help you a little bit with, with what you just explained? Could we concentrate on the motion that is there, keeping in mind what you're saying? Once this motion is done, could we then, as a council, entertain the possibility of additional questions to soften those first questions? Would you feel that would be the right way to go?
That, that would be acceptable, so that we're treating, we're treating everyone with this equal fairness.
Okay. So, maybe what we need to do is go back to the motion the way it is, and I will entertain that afterwards. Would that be fair? Thank you. Are we okay with that?
Well, if I may, Madam Mayor, I think that the point councillor Creed is making has relevance to the discussion we're having now.
Yes, totally.
So, to try to separate the two would be unfair as far as understanding this particular issue and as he explained, maybe his reasons for voting the way he did.
Right.
So, I, I believe what he was just stating was relevant to the discussion we're having.
Yeah, and I believe it is.
Okay.
But if you looked at the agenda, it does not say plebiscite question. It says plebiscite questions, meaning that we are willing to entertain a revisit or add whatever we need to do as a council.
Understood, but please understand that, you know, none of us, none of us can understand your, you know, specific mental layout of how the meeting will progress.
I totally agree.
And if I may, I just want to tell our gallery here, contrary to what anyone might believe, this council did not meet beforehand about what would be discussed here. Uh, there was no way to know before coming what councillor Barnes would even say.
No.
Nor to give him suggestions of how to maybe change some of his wording so as not to reflect poorly on other councillors, right? Um, so, uh, so please be aware that there was no pre-meeting before this meeting, uh, and nor do we really fully understand what the content of this meeting will continue to be. We are making this meeting up as we go.
Exactly.
Right? So, just so we're all clear.
Councillor Pivoy, you're totally correct there, and had it not been for councillor Barnes covering me regarding that and trying to figure out what we could do from my end, I don't know the rest either, so.
To give you, yeah, and to give you an example of why I feel that way, and I fully respect councillor Barnes, I really do, and, and your position on, on this possible change. Uh, you threw out words there that, in your own personal feeling, and that's fine, I just want to point out, that you felt you weren't being, you personally weren't being fair. You were not, I'm guessing, in any way implying that other people who voted the same way have the same, you know, bias or, you know, preference, reasons for voting the way they did.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and then you also said your, your change today is in your effort to remain fair, when, I just want to point out that maybe for other people to vote the same way as councillor Barnes, the idea of fairness was the reason we voted the way we did, right? So, um, it's interesting that you're changing your vote in the name of fairness makes us, the rest of us, look like maybe we're not being fair, and that just maybe isn't the way that you meant to.
I might think at all.
Yeah, that you meant maybe that some might interpret that. Uh, I don't personally, but I can see how someone might say, "Wow, did you hear how Barnes just threw his, you know, fellow councillors under the bus?"
I can hear that.
So, thank you. Yeah, I, I heard it the whole way through, so.
Okay.
Uh, and I, but I do appreciate councillor Barnes and what you're trying to say. I appreciate your efforts to keep us specific to this motion that's on the table.
It's just for clarity.
Right.
But you're right, and I really feel both of you are correct. We have to use fairness always through, and that is one of our values, and we will stick to that value.
Absolutely, yeah. So, if I may now, having, you know, that whole spiel, I'll now share in councillor Creed's, uh, thoughts of why I voted the way I did, and that was because of fairness. Uh, the questions we had already discussed in council for other plebiscite questions had a huge bearing on the reason I voted against the fifth question. Huge! And so, when it was proposed that maybe in this meeting, we would be discussing the possibility of, as the mayor pointed out, softening the other plebiscite questions, I fear that maybe this word "softening" might mean to, to make them less unbiased and more biased, but that's a fear I have.
Thank you.
And, and but that, because of that fairness issue is one of the reasons I voted the way I did. Absolutely. So, uh, I'll just throw that out for now.
Okay. Now, uh, just to try to help you understand a little bit, I'm going the same way as you're going, one step at a time here. Uh, when we deal with the other questions, when a motion come at a table regarding a rewording or whatever that is, council will decide if they want those other question, yes or no, and what the language would be for those question. I am not making that decision. Okay? Is that fair? Okay? All right. Councillor, maybe you wanted to say something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a motion on the floor, and we need to, we need to call for question on that motion.
That's what we do, that's what I have done. Uh, well, we, we left people a chance to speak to that motion, which they have the right to. Okay. Any more comments?
Uh, the one thing that I would like to add is that I, I want to reemphasize that the way we vote on this question does not indicate our feelings on what the possible answers to those questions might be. That this is just trying to create a question that will, uh, give council the information that we want. This is a, a non-binding plebiscite, designed to gather information, not designed to force council to do one thing or another.
Right. Correct. Okay.
If I may, along those lines, and I appreciate you saying that, along those lines, when discussing the actual wording of the question, you know, there's an impression of, and these are two legitimate and, and concerns, do we give a little extra weight to the organizing body who came and asked us to put this on, the plebiscite, or do we try to ask a question in our own best judgment that reflects the interests of the entire town, not just that group? And, uh, so, that was, you know, that, those were also taken into consideration in Tuesday's vote as well.
Okay, so that's a fair question, a fair comment.
Madam Mayor, um, in the, in the hopes of democracy, if you recall on Tuesday night, I asked out of the gallery for more input from the, the first two questions. We did not get a response from that. So, that group had a chance to respond to the questions that we put on the, on the plebiscite.
Okay. Councillor Van Gruy, let me maybe correct that a little bit from my perspective. The group wanted to respond if the fifth question was passed through.
No, I was saying, I was saying, Mayor, we, we give them the opportunity to respond on the first two questions, backyard hens and fluoride, and there was no response from the gallery.
That's right, and that was after we have decided there would be only four questions, and I remember that very clearly.
But they still had the opportunity for discussion.
If I may now.
Yeah, but anyway, I understand why is that.
Yeah. I'd like to speak to that, and I appreciate that, councillor Van Gruy, because you're totally right. They were given the opportunity, and they did not take it. I agree with you 100%. I happen to have spoken to them afterwards, and I know why they didn't take it. They were here in case special preference was given to one interest group. If we had granted the fifth question, they would have been all over it because we had broken a precedent stating that we would allow public input into the questions and the way they were worded. So, they would have said, "Hey, now that you're taking other people's wording, we'd like an opportunity to change the wording of our questions."
Yeah.
By the way, they're here tonight if you want to confirm that this was in fact their reasons for being silent on Tuesday.
Councillor Pivoy, I concur. Okay? So, we have a motion on the table, it's time, now time to take a vote. Councillor, unless you want to speak one more time?
I just wanted to.
And then we need to, to vote unless, councillor Edmonds, would you like to address? You did not have a chance to say a thing. Would you mind, councillor Creed?
Madam Mayor, I just can't help but notice this feeling a little rushed. It sounds like you're trying to maybe potentially muscle discussion.
No, I'm not.
So, please don't limit the discussion that we're trying to have.
No.
Uh, in the interest of the process, yes, we need to keep it relevant to this question.
I am.
But so far, in my opinion, nothing is straight from the topic of this.
I am not rushing it, councillor. I'm giving you all a fair chance to speak, but I noticed that councillor Edmonds had not said anything. So, if I'm trying to get councillor Edmonds because he didn't speak, and he should have the right to speak.
For sure.
Okay.
Councillor Edmonds.
And then councillor Creed, okay?
Well, at the last council meeting, I got the impression that some of the councils didn't understand what the question was, and I think that's where the confusion started because it, we had so many variations, different ways of, uh, taking it the way it is now, and other suggestions on how to do it, and I don't think at that time, everybody understood what the actual question was.
Okay, enough comments.
So.
Okay. I appreciate your comment. Councillor Creed?
Just wanted a clarification on councillor Barnes' motion. So, his motion was for a fifth question. It was not to replace question three, but it was to add, add the fifth question. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to read the motion, please, one more time? Are we good? Do you, do you have any more?
You're ready from here.
No, that's it, we're good?
You're ready.
Okay. Would you please read it one more time?
Moved by councillor Barnes at the following question regarding prohibition to be used in the plebiscite of October 6, 2014. If the province would amend legislation to allow limited access in our area, are you in favor of restaurants and/or recreational facilities within the town of Carstens selling alcohol?
Okay.
So, I, I think I just have one final thought before a vote, because I know, you know, in, in the process, the way it's set up, sometimes after a vote is taken, it's hard to have a say. In fact, I was asked by several people, "Hey, after that last vote, happened you didn't chime in?" And it's like, "Well, they don't really give you time to do that after a vote." So, I, I just wanted to say.
Well, after a vote, it's best to chime before the vote.
Sure, exactly. Thank you. So, I'm gonna do it with it and chime. Um, in my opinion, this is just me, my opinion on these four questions as they now stand, I believe they're all very, uh, simple and unbiased. If we do revote on this other one and it carries, you know, and I'll be in full support of that, of that decision if that's the case, even though I do intend to vote against it again, right?
I know.
However, by not voting for it now, because the way I see it currently, it's fair and unbiased. If this carries, I am going to be very biased on my other questions and in my efforts to see them reflect the intent of the groups that asked us to ask them.
And so.
So, I don't want anyone accusing me of hypocrisy when right now, before this carries, I'm on the side of unbiased, simple questions. In just a moment, I'm probably not gonna have that same question.
Councillor Pivoy, I totally appreciate your emotional stance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, now, all in favor? Okay. Against?
Sorry, but I'm against. I thought we were voting to vote, so.
You almost got me.
Roberts Rules.
You almost got me worried here.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Okay. It carries. All right. Now.
And may I just say, thrilled that it carried, right? Actually thrilled that it carried.
Okay. Councillor Pivoy, I'm going to give you the chance of a lifetime. It's your turn to express your feeling and to put forward, if you don't mind, go one item at a time, okay? Let's take the chicken, the backyard hen. Could we stay on that?
I'm gonna be honest with you, Mayor.
Until we have a, a motion?
Yeah.
And then we'll take the next one and the next one.
I was, I was absolutely unprepared for the, the way this meeting would go. I, I don't have anything prepared. I have no motions prepared.
Okay.
I have, I have thoughts on them, but I mean, as far as, you know, that, you're kind of throwing me, uh, just right, you know, we've had no time to prepare, there were no agendas proposed, you know, other than a one-word agenda.
Okay.
It, it almost makes me feel like we need to take some time and rethink these other questions now, at time where we can actually sit back and reflect and, and do a good job, a fair job. Um, we've been on this alcohol question week after week after week. The concept of revisiting chickens has only been on the table for five minutes.
The agenda was plebiscite questions, not questions, correct?
Sure, yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right, so, if, if you don't read it the full way, I can't help you there, I'm sorry. Councillor Creed?
Um, sorry, councillor Pivoy, my councillor Pivoy, I have prepared some of the thoughts on, uh, these other questions because, uh...
we've had no time to prepare, there were no agendas proposed, you know, other than a one-word agenda.
Okay.
It almost makes me feel like we need to take some time and rethink these other questions now, at time where we can actually sit back and reflect and do a good job, a fair job. We've been on this alcohol question, week after week after week. The concept of revisiting chickens has only been on the table for five minutes.
The agenda was plebiscite questions, not questions. Correct?
Sure, yeah, that's great.
Okay, all right, so, if you don't read it the full way, I can't help you there, I'm sorry. Counselor Creed?
Sorry, Counselor Pivoy, my Counselor Pivoy, I have prepared some thoughts-
Thank you. That's good.
-on these other questions, because if I just give us a little background on the question of the backyard hens. April 5th, in 2011, there were 23 people in the gallery to support the concept of having backyard hens, and brought a petition of approximately 130 names to council, asking for that to happen. Council was not supportive of the group at that time, so it was brought back. And council actually, as you remember, passed a resolution to have a pilot project on backyard hens. And the rug was kind of pulled out from under them when it was suggested that we have a plebiscite on it first. So, I would like to propose the following question.
Is that a motion, Counselor?
Yes, this will be my motion to the question on backyard hens should read, should the town conduct a pilot project, and I put similar to the city of Red Deer, to determine the impact and feasibility of allowing backyard hens? Certainly. You want me to read it again, or do you-
That works, yeah.
Okay. You want me to read it again?
Yeah. Sure.
Okay.
Counselor, can I just suggest something?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that everybody know Red Deer-
Okay. Well, that's maybe not necessary-
Can I suggest something, Mayor? Let's get the motion on the table, then we can discuss.
Yeah, yeah. Perfectly. Good job.
Sorry. We know that the city of Red Deer did a pilot project-
And I know it was very successful, by the way.
But, anyway, so, we can discuss whether we want to include that-
Yeah, we'll discuss that after. Sorry, I shouldn't have interfered.
Parenthetical addition or not, to me, it's not that critical, but I will include it again as I read the question.
Thank you.
Should the town conduct a pilot project, similar to the city of Red Deer, in parenthesis, to determine the impact and feasibility of allowing backyard hens? And this was agreed to by Wendy Creed, who was asked to do the pilot project originally.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
That's an addition to this list?
No, it would be a replacement-
With the question as number six?
It would be a new question.
Madam Chairman, point of order, if this motion is to replace the other motion-
No, not to replace, that's what council-
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm so sorry. It has to be an addition.
An additional question?
You would need to rescind-
If we're adding additional questions, then certainly that, if that's the proper way to do this-
Yeah, at this point, it has to be an addition.
The question just said we need to rescind first, is that what you're saying?
If you are proposing that this question replace the original question?
Yes.
You will need to rescind the previous motion and vote on that, and then put this motion forward. If that is the intent, or if you are proposing an additional question-
Just one question, point of order. Would it be possible to add this question and then later remove the other, so that it doesn't have to go in the proceeding order?
If, well, I guess if you did it that way, then you would, if the rescind motion failed, then you would have two questions.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah. I think if you want, just a comment, if you want to have two question, that is a possible thing. One could be the question as stated, the other question could be addressing the potential of something like, are you in favor of a backyard hen project, pilot project with follow-up changes in the legislation? That could be the second question, that would address the need or the will or desire of those who really would like that. So, it would be similar to the last question, which is voted on, and reflect the will of the segment of the population that had brought the idea forward. And that could be a better playing field. Does that make sense to you, Counselor?
Perfect sense to me.
Would you agree with something like that?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Counselor Creed's motion, so-
Yes, but would you agree with that concept of keeping that?
Again, I don't see how that concept is relevant to the motion, so-
Well, it's up to you, I'm trying to clarify what we can do.
I actually am 100% clear.
Perfect. Okay. So, do you want to-
I'm comfortable either way, Madam Mayor, whether you'd like me to withdraw and make a motion first to rescind, or whether to add this as an additional question.
I can tell you, at this point, we have published two first questions. And as an addition, it probably is an easier administrative way to do it.
Yes, Madam Chairman, just administratively, the two questions were posed within the same motion originally. So, the, are you in favor of allowing backyard hens in the town of Cardston, and are you in favor of having fluoride in town of Cardston drinking water, are on the same resolution.
Okay.
I believe that because we have already advertised those two questions under the Municipal Government Act, if you rescind those and put a new question on, it may open the plebiscite to challenge. So, I would suggest administratively, if you're going to put an additional question on those two, that it be an additional question and that you don't rescind the previous, because we have already advertised them.
All right, thank you. Counselor Bangle?
Madam Mayor, I might be losing it with my age.
That's okay, I'm losing it too.
But I felt like, before this backyard hens question was to be put on the plebiscite, we agreed that we would look at a pilot project after the information gathering plebiscite.
We had agreed with this. You're correct. We did. But today, some counselors around this table feel that to have a fair, equal playing field-
Then I'd like to ask the administration to go back into the minutes and see if that was made in the motion, that we asked the question of-
It was a motion.
-of a pilot project after the plebiscite. And if it was, then we need to rescind that motion.
And Counselor Bangle, I respect that and I agree. Even if that's in there, though, that doesn't preclude us from adding questions to the plebiscite today.
No, it doesn't.
So, you know, if we said, hey, we're not gonna discuss this as a council until after the plebiscite, that didn't necessarily limit how many plebiscite questions we can have related to chickens.
I think one of the things that we really need to remember and to focus on is that the purpose of this plebiscite is to gather information. So, gathering more information, it can't be a bad thing. I just, that's one of the reasons why I was in favor of the difference in the alcohol question. I don't see a fundamental problem with asking a more specific question. I would love to actually see just one question as far as the chickens go, but if it is gonna require a second question there, I don't see a problem with that.
Madam? Just for clarification of Counselor Bangle's request, there was a motion on June 10th. There was a lot of or is to start, but the meat of the motion was, therefore be it resolved that the plebiscite regarding the issue of backyard hens be held before any backyard hens pilot project commences. That was the motion that's on the book.
Okay, so, from my administration point of view, that this motion need to be rescined before we move forward if we add a question?
Only if you were gonna start a pilot project before the plebiscite.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Okay. So, we can add a question to the plebiscite if we saw wishes. Okay. So, if you keep, if we keep the first question the way it is stated, would you want to lighten up your second question to focus more specifically on a pilot project?
Actually, my question does focus specifically on the-
Okay, go ahead. Read it over.
Okay. Should the town conduct a pilot project, similar to the city of Red Deer, if we choose to say that, to determine the impact and feasibility of allowing backyard hens?
Okay. All right. So, Counselor Barnes?
Would you accept a friendly amendment to remove the, similar to the city of Red Deer?
Yes, I'm not attached to that, I just thought for clarification, some people might be aware of that, and that could be put into advertising and information, it doesn't have to be put into the question, so.
So, would you accept the friendly amendment?
I certainly would, if we would read the question, should the town conduct a pilot project to determine the impact and feasibility of allowing backyard hens? Could read very simply.
All right. Any other question?
Can we make another friendly amendment, put in there after the plebiscite?
Well, it's already-
The plebiscite is the question, the first question, right?
Yeah.
So, that's the first question?
It's already on the-
Without that, you can start the pilot project right away.
Yes, could be.
Not till after the plebiscite question.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that in here.
This is the plebiscite question.
Yes. But it doesn't, it's not, that's a question on the, to vote on, but it doesn't stop you from running your pilot project now.
Well, I think the previous motion that was, that Marion read, does say that the pilot project will be after the plebiscite.
We haven't rescinded that motion.
We haven't, yeah, yeah. Okay. So, in all fairness, we will vote to see if you are willing to allow that question to be added to the plebiscite. So, this is to allow the question to be added to the plebiscite.
Call for a recorded vote, please.
Okay. Record, please. Graham, record the vote. Okay. All in favor of the additional question? Carried. All opposed? Counselor Pivoy, you will-
She wants to draw a call for a recorded vote.
Can I have you keep the four up until Graham has a chance to record?
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
You get it? You have it? Thank you. Okay. All right. Now, let's-
Opposed? Yeah.
Let's now deal with the fluoride question, which was the second question.
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay, I talked to Justine Scott, who was the original proposer of the fluoride, so I do have her permission to-
Speak to it.
Speak to it. She did propose a couple of variations, I'm choosing the probably less specific, and it may be subject to some slight modifications as well, but let me just, let me read the-
Just go ahead.
And-
I shall stick quiet. Counselor Pivoy is watching me.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll read it as, without making the motion at this point, so that we can discuss the wording, would that be appropriate, or would you like it as a motion at this point?
It's up to your choosing.
Okay. I will make this as a motion then, for this question be added to the plebiscite, and then we'll talk about friendly amendments to it if needs be. Okay, so, I move that we add the following question to the plebiscite. Regardless of your personal belief of whether fluoride is beneficial or harmful, do you feel that it is ethical to put fluoride in the community water supply?
Can we read that one more time?
Yes, okay. Wait, are you proposing that as a motion, or just before?
This is proposed as a motion, and like I say, we can discuss the wording somewhat, if you feel, this is the essence. And I will explain the reason of that wording, because fluoride is controversial, the real intent of the question is to give people a choice, as whether they have to consume fluoride or whether they don't. And whether you believe it is, you know, good for you, or whether you believe it is bad for you, there's still people who would rather not have it in their water supply, but having it in the water supply, they have no say in the matter, they have no choice. And so, she would like to, that reflected as the intent of their question. So, in other words, I'll read this again. Regardless of your personal belief of whether fluoride is beneficial or harmful, do you feel it is ethical to put fluoride in the community water supply? So, that's the question I'll accept again.
One more time.
All right. Regardless of your personal belief of whether fluoride is beneficial or harmful, do you feel that it is ethical to put fluoride in the community water supply? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Comments?
Just a friendly amendment on the wording. After fluoride, comma, unintended medication, comma.
I don't know that we need to add that. I know, that was one thing that Justine did mention to me. Personally, I don't feel that that needs to be in there. As, you know, unintended medication, it probably is, but my feeling was not, you know, to try to still keep it as simple as possible.
Okay.
If I may, just have a question for administration, based on trying to find fair wording for Justine's recommended question. What is our current municipal claim, the reason, what is the claimed reason we add fluoride to drinking water?
We are following our current license with Alberta Environment, and that is regulated through Health Canada.
Based on recommendations from Health Canada, however, our understanding is that the council does have the power to remove it by bylaw.
Council has the power to remove it with application to amend our license with Alberta Environment.
Yeah.
Which many municipalities have done throughout Alberta.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, here, the question is on ethics. So, any more comments?
Well, yeah, I think that, I get that ethics is, you know, the intention of the question, however, I just don't see anybody who's currently in favor of fluoride seeing an unethical reason to put it in the water. So, I'm not sure that ethics is the intention of the reason to challenge.
Yeah, this is where I would, you know, would be more, you know, willing to give a friendly amendment, whether we use the word ethical, because the, I think the key intent here is choice. Is it, do we have, you know, give people a choice? So, if we were to change that to, you know, the first part, leave the same, whether you believe the fluoride is beneficial or harmful, do you feel that it should be in the community water supply? In other words, so that we know that it may have a benefit, you know, or it may not, but do we impose that, do we impose that on everyone just because, you know, because of the perceived benefit, or, you know, because there's many people that don't perceive a benefit from it? And so, I think that's the intent, so as we, you know, I'm not tied to the word ethical on this, I think, and if someone would like to give me a better wording to express that intent, I'm welcome to that as well.
I'd just like to see the word ethical taken out personally.
And I'm fine with that.
Maybe a friendly amendment, I'm just gonna throw this out there as a discussion, and then we'll talk about amendments, but I'm thinking perhaps the intent of the group that doesn't want fluoride in their drinking water might be better represented by a question worded a little closer to these lines. On behalf of those citizens in this town who would prefer to have fluoride-free water or to have no fluoride in their drinking water, would you be willing to remove it on their behalf? Something along those lines, I mean, I, you know, that's just discussion. So, you know, we're saying, hey, we get that you want fluoride, but for those that don't want fluoride, are you willing to remove the fluoride for their sake?
Well, that's, I think that is the intent of the group.
Well, that one specifically is asking, do you believe it's ethical?
So... Yeah, well, I say, I could take out the ethical part.
I think the intention of the group is to have fluoride removed. So at the end, if the answers go according to the intent of the request, then the result of the question should lead us to removing fluoride, not to believing now the town believes it's unethical.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I could.
I agree, I could.
Counselor Pivoy, so would you try, what you're trying to say is, would you support council...
In removing fluoride on behalf of those who do not want it in their drinking water?
Yeah, if the plebiscite says we don't want it, would you want council to move, you expect council to move forward and do the application?
Sure.
That's what you're trying to say, right?
Would you support council in removing fluoride on behalf of those who do not want it forced upon them?
Can we make a friendly amendment to that?
Well, it's just discussion.
It's just discussion.
We were going to go ahead and discuss and then...
Can we add the word added?
Yeah, because we can remove all of the fluoride.
Because there's a natural level of fluoride.
Because there's naturally occurring in the water.
There's plenty of natural fluoride.
We want to have that removed.
And for your information, there is about 2 part per million in our water. That can vary between 2 to 4 part per million in our water locally. And the level that AHS is asking us to keep it at is 8 to, 8 part per million to 10 part per million. We lower than that.
And if I may, also, there's a natural level of, you know, natural fluoride in the water. What we add is actually hydrofluoric acid, which some people call fluoride, it isn't even real.
It's chemical.
If I can add that, that was actually, Justine's request was to specify not fluoride, but hydrofluoric acid, which I felt might not be understood.
People will win.
No, that's fluoride.
Yeah, no, it can be called fluoride.
It's a word fluoride.
So I think, you know, if we use fluoride, I think it'll be understood.
Counselor Pivoy, you wrote the motion.
I can...
Could you maybe read it and see if we can have Counselor Creed read the...
Can I read what he's got?
Yeah, well, I actually like Counselor Pivoy's wording because it expresses the intent.
Okay, could he read it back to you and you can agree with him?
I will agree.
Okay, all right, go for it.
So, so far we have, would you support council in removing additional fluoride on behalf of those citizens who, we could say, just do not want it in their drinking water?
Yeah, moving, added, removing the added fluoride from, okay.
So that will be the consequence of a positive plebiscite return?
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Are you in agreement?
That's not perfect yet.
I would agree with that.
I'll read it again while we're thinking about it.
Please.
Yeah, so would you support council, that's the nice beginning, you know, in removing additional fluoride, we should just say right there, additional fluoride from our drinking water on behalf of those citizens who do not want it?
Added fluoride.
Added fluoride.
Right.
Add it, add it.
So, is it clear enough that it is the only, that it would be the natural consequence of a positive result of a plebiscite?
Yeah, the two words we currently have do contradict each other. We're saying remove and add right next to each other. It makes the question a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah, can you think?
So I can see.
Take out the, not add it.
I can say this, would you, how about this, this solves the problem. Would you support council in no longer adding fluoride to...
Town water supply.
Yeah, the town water supply.
In...
To the town. The town water supply on behalf of those citizens who do not want it.
Well, I don't, you know, once the plebiscite is taken, those people who don't want it would have spoken at that point. So you can't limit it just to that.
I think, and I appreciate that, Mary, yeah. I think the intention of the group who wanted us to come isn't to say, do you want your fluoride gone? It's to say, do you want to continue fluoridating people's water who would otherwise not have it in there? So in other words, to give them the choice somehow. Reflecting that, the question is difficult. But the citizens answering this question need to understand, similar to the alcohol question, they first had to understand that we would need to amend provincial legislation for the second part of the question to apply. So in this question, we're not asking you to do this on your behalf or your family. We're saying, for those families who don't want it, for the, to the benefit of those families who do not want fluoride, would you support council in no longer adding fluoride to the town water?
Yeah, I understand what Counselor Pivoy is saying is that there may be some people who feel fluoride is beneficial and they may want it in their water, but the fact that they have a choice to add it to their water if they want to, it's very easy to add, is very difficult to remove. Very, very difficult and expensive to remove. So I, I understand Counselor Pivoy's question. You know, if there's confusion, you know, in the council, maybe there will be confusion in the community. I don't know. But to me, it's clear that it's a choice.
Okay, fair enough. So we're going to have to vote on it. I'm going to...
Question, is this a friendly conversation? Is this a friendly amendment or is this another...
Let's call it a friendly amendment.
Or we could withdraw, yeah, either one.
Or withdraw.
I'll withdraw and then allow Counselor Pivoy to make, I'll withdraw my original motion and if Counselor Pivoy will make that, I'll question as a motion.
Counselor Pivoy, do you want to read it once more? And would you please take his wording? So can you let me signal that it is a motion, Counselor?
You bet. Just trying to put all these friendly amendments together. Here we go.
Thank you.
I think so far we have, and this, of course, is open to friendly amendment. On behalf of those families who do not want fluoride, would you support council in no longer adding fluoride to the town water supply?
May I, Chairman, I'm sorry, that's a little different than what was originally proposed here. So can we just make sure that the recorder has it?
Yeah, yeah, I can read that a couple of times. So...
Slow down.
And to do it as a motion, I move to add the following question to the upcoming plebiscite. On behalf of those families who do not want fluoride, would you support council in no longer adding fluoride to the town water supply?
Okay, what I'm trying to understand, does it stand in itself as a question or as a follower to the result of the first question? That is what I'm not clear.
It's a great question, Mayor. If I may, I personally am of the opinion that after we add all these questions, we most likely would want to remove the other two from the table. So this would be, you know, but that would be later after this was established.
So the problem with that is, is that we have already advertised those two questions.
Understood, and I understand that. But I understand we have prior to 15 days to change and amend and clean it up. Is that, am I correct?
You're required under the act to advertise for two consecutive weeks prior to the, to the election or prior to the vote on the plebiscite. The difficulty here, I see administratively and potentially would open it to scrutiny, would be that those two questions have already been advertised when they were originally decided back in August.
July, July.
But we advertised in August, definitely.
Okay, all right, so...
I see no problem with both questions.
Okay, so we have both questions. So right now, we have a motion on the table. Anybody else want to talk to that motion?
I would, I think.
Counselor, you go first.
I'm not seeing a significant difference here in the way, in what we're asking on the question.
Between the two questions?
Between the question that is currently there and the proposed question here. And I, I have a difficulty in supporting that simply from the perspective of, this is the one question where I received a number of emails from this particular group asking it not to go on the plebiscite at all. And I'm just, I'm struggling here right now with the, jumping through hoops to try to get the intent of what that group wanted when the intent of what that group wanted was us not to put it on a plebiscite.
Okay.
How would they want to deal with it then?
They wanted us to do it.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, we have a motion on the table.
Now, if I may...
Go ahead.
I understand what Counselor Barkis is saying. If both questions are on the plebiscite, then we are essentially asking our citizens to say, are you in favor of having fluoride in drinking water? To which many will say yes, I think we all understand that.
Many will say no.
Many will say no, that's fine. So are you in favor of, and then over here, on behalf of those families, would you support council in no longer adding it? The problem is if one person says yes to the first question, saying, yes, I want you to add it, and then says yes to this one, meaning, yes, I gave you permission to take it away, which of their two yeses do we, do we listen to?
Yeah, okay. So, fair enough. So we have a motion on the table and I'm going to call the questions. All in favor? Fail.
We need to call for a proposal.
Opposing against? Thank you. So which means that the question on fluoride does not have a second question attached to it? Okay, so let's go to the third question and try to see if we need to change anything regarding that. Counselor Pivoy, if you don't mind me pointing to you again. You shared with me a second question for that question and I told you, please bring it forward. Do you remember what it was? Because if you don't, I will give it to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do remember what it was, I do not want to go before.
Okay, fair enough. So is everybody satisfied with the question on events on Sunday on town on facility? Counselor Creed had asked to have a word changed, which was from tournament to the word event, which was broader.
Right, and I'm okay if...
We'll leave it this way?
Well, if the group wanted, you know, their original request was sporting tournaments, right? Is that correct? And, you know, if they would like to go back to that word tournaments, which might be more actually accurate because that's what they were asking for. And someone pointed out to me that it should be organized sporting because we don't want to go and chase a family off the ball diamond.
All right, so Counselor, we have a wording right now that council had agreed upon. We have a motion to agree those four, those four questions the way they are right here. Are you trying to become more specific in adding a question to that question?
You mean adding, amending that question?
No, no, adding something.
Okay, well, so...
Are we satisfied with that?
Are you saying that we would, we would need to rescind this and then add a new one or...
No, no, the same way as we did an addition for the chicken, the same way as we did an addition for alcohol.
I would not add another question.
All right.
If this, if this question is sufficient for, everyone is satisfied with this question, I'm satisfied.
All right, Counselor Pivoy, go ahead.
If I may speak to that, Counselor Creed.
Please go ahead.
This is, as we've all stated many times, just an information gathering question. After we get the answers, let's say everybody says yes to this question, we can then restrict it as a council to just tournaments, to just three times a week.
Yes.
Three Sundays a month.
Three Sundays a month. We get to pick that as a council.
Yeah, you do have that, right. Okay.
No, three Sundays a month. No, I'm teasing.
Why don't you try six a month? Okay.
I'm thinking economic development here, Bartis.
All right, so it seems to me, councillors, that we have kind of broadened the scope of the plebiscite but maybe clarified some of the issue. And if we are satisfied with what we have, I will say we will carry on with administration. We may have to reread those.
Yeah, I was just going to ask actually, Mayor, after all that we've done, could we just summarize, essentially, I think we're down to now six questions on the plebiscite.
Correct.
Two dealing with alcohol, two dealing with fluoride.
Two, chickens.
Second one of fluoride, sorry, Justine.
Right, yeah. Well, someday is the way it goes, that's what you call them in Quebec, I'm sorry. But it's not a bad thing. Okay, so thank you very much and thank you to all of you who saw proceeding. You can see we can be an interesting bunch. Okay, thank you very much. At 5:15, we have another meeting in this room and we are on our way to a group of us to stay with the minister.
Travel safely, guys.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I was behind them. I got stuck behind them once already today.
I would have been on time, but we weren't.
Counselor Pivoy, what time was your meeting at, sorry?
Six?